Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, July 27, 2021 Special Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Emily Elpers, Strategic Communications Office. The Kansas Emergency Rental Assistance Program has provided over $18.5 million to over 3,300 Kansas households. The program will now be serving landlords and tenants within the city of Wichita. More information can be found on the Kansas Housing website. Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Alora Forshi, Director of Emergency Communications, who's here to give an update on her department.
Thank you, Emily. Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you, Emily. Good morning.
Hello, Alora Forshi, Director of Sedgwick County Emergency Communications. And I'm going to try to be somewhat quick this morning, but we have a lot to talk about as there's a lot going on in 911 and a lot of speculation about what's going on, and I want to try to provide some context to some stuff for you. First of all, let's talk about the phone outage that happened on Sunday morning early, which is what I don't want to have to be talking about, but unfortunately is our reality. We had a maintenance window provided by AT&amp;T through the 911 Coordinating Council for Sunday morning from midnight to 6:00 a.m. And the communication that was received, it said explicitly that Shawnee County and Sedgwick County would see no interruption in service, that we have redundant circuits, which we do, and that there was no action that needed to be taken by Sedgwick County or Shawnee County. So, moving forward, of course, we made our staff aware of it, that this was something that they were going to be working on. Please watch the center, watch the phone lines, and they did so. They did so. We went into that maintenance window not expecting anything, feeling very assured by our partner with AT&amp;T and the Coordinating Council that we would not see anything. And oddly enough, we still were receiving calls past midnight. We were receiving calls through even 2:30 in the morning. But it was about that time we got a call from one of our hospital partners that said, hey, we've been trying to call you on 911. We're not getting through. They immediately started doing test calls from dispatch. They were not getting through. And so, we stood up our backup system, which is an internal system to us that DIO has created for us. Immediately, we started shuffling calls over onto that backup system, and that worked as designed to start getting those calls answered expeditiously. It did not take long to have that engaged and active. We, of course, reached out to AT&amp;T to ask what happened. We reached out to Shawnee County also to see if they saw a similar occurrence up there, and they did. They were, they had to implement their backup system unexpectedly. And so, we have a couple of things internally moving forward that we're going to do, which is that any maintenance window that we have, we are going to roll to our backup system. We're not going to, I can't trust that they understand the redundancy of the system enough to say that we're not going to have an outage. And I have too big of an obligation to our community to allow that to occur. So, we're going to proactively move to that backup system whenever we have any sort of maintenance occurring on the system. I have talked with both the 911 Coordinating Council and AT&amp;T about the frustrations with this, obviously, and the concern I have for our communities' inability to reach 911 in some peace or way during that time. Again, I went back and checked our reporting system, and we did still have calls coming in, which is why our staff didn't initially catch it. But there was some glitch, there were some calls, obviously, were not coming in, and we've got to figure out how that happened, and then really pressing them for some resolution to that and to have a better, they need a better understanding of where that system redundancy is because it's not working as promised. And so, I am trying to get some answers there. I feel very thankful that we have Representative Carmichael from Wichita that sits on the Coordinating Council. I know that he spoke yesterday with our media partners about his frustration in it, so I know that he's advocating strongly for us to have a very solid system here. And so, we will continue to move forward in that endeavor. I have AT&amp;T that's going to provide me a report on what happened, and as soon as I have that, I will be sharing with you guys so we can get more information and figure out any other steps that need to be taken to make sure that this does not happen. A lot of unknowns right now, more unknowns than I'm comfortable with, but I am just waiting for more information from engineers. Any questions on the outage?
Alora, so, we have a contract directly with AT&amp;T or with this Coordinating Council?
Our contract is with the Coordinating Council. Their contract is with AT&amp;T, and that's where it gets interesting.
Thank you.
In that I am really not the AT&amp;T customer. 911 is not the AT&amp;T customer. We're a customer of the Coordinating Council.
And the Coordinating Council is a state organization?
It is a state organization, yes, that was created under the 911 statute. That includes the 911 tax fees. The Coordinating Council, excuse me, manages that. They manage the statewide hosted phone system, excuse me, that we're on, and their roles are defined in that statute.
So, you mentioned Representative Carmichael. Who, what is the Coordinating Council? Is it out of Topeka? Is it lawmakers?
No, it is not lawmakers. It is a multidisciplinary council that includes 911 directors, of course, representing that voice. It includes lawmakers. There are four lawmakers, two are from the House of Representatives and two from the State Senate. There are vendor partners that sit on the Coordinating Council. There are representatives from the Kansas Sheriff's Association, the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police. I'm trying to think who else sits on the council. It's a pretty large multidisciplinary council, yes.
So, that council has a contract directly with AT&amp;T for 911 support at just us and Shawnee or all around the state?
The majority of the state. There's very few 911 centers in the state of Kansas that do not have, that are not on this state system. And the reason why we're all on this state system is interoperations, first of all, but then also to be able to leverage that buying power. It creates a greater, greater amount of technology for less money as we all share that load, I guess.
Okay. And so, there wasn't, to your knowledge, there wasn't any citizen accident problems that created?
Not that we've been made aware of, no. And we did have a couple of calls where people said, I've been trying to call, and so we know we got some of those calls through. But, you know, that's where that's always that gut punch of what did we miss? But nothing that we're aware of, but we don't take that question lightly.
Okay. So, I guess it falls under the boundaries of the Coordinating Council and AT&amp;T, but at least you've got a plan going forward that no matter what, you're just going to run the redundant backup during any?
Sure. Right. So, we're going to control what we can control, which is that we can say, hey, we want our calls moved over because we just can't trust this. And so, while it is under the purview of the Coordinating Council and AT&amp;T, we intend to be a very strong voice pushing for an audit of that system.
Is that, does any of this have to do with our own internal IT department?
Uh-uh. No. No. What worked for us so well is what our internal IT department had developed for us, which is that backup Cisco phone system that we can roll our 911 calls to. That way, the community can dial 911. It goes to that system. They don't see any difference on the front end of that.
Okay.
So, that's what worked well for us.
All right. Thank you for the explanation. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good morning, Alora.
Good morning.
Just a couple of quick questions. One is that since the Coordinating Council is the one that has the contract, in the middle of the night at 2:00 in the morning, who do you call when something goes down if we don't have the contract? Do you have a contact number or what?
We do, yeah. We have a 24/7 AT&amp;T Resolution Center number that we call for issues as small as a computer no longer working versus a 911 outage. And so, that's who we call and report that to. We also, I was awake at 3:00 in the morning when this happened, of course, I was notified, and so I start shooting off information to the Coordinating Council. But their role is not to fix the issue in that immediate circumstance, so that was not a, they were not awoken for that, but they were certainly notified.
Okay. The second question is, back when we went to this enhanced 911 system, one of the great benefits to that was when one system goes down, say Sedgwick County, another system picks it up automatically, and even though it might be a different county, it may be Leavenworth or someplace else that is running our 911, the public still receives the same services. So, why didn't that happen?
That is absolutely what we are hoping to have happen on this system. What we've run into is the issue that we will overwhelm a 911 system. If you think of the state of Kansas and the demographics of Kansas, we are obviously the largest county besides Johnson County who's not on this phone system. So, thinking about rolling over to another 911 center, most PSEPs, our 911 centers in Kansas are one-seat PSEPs, meaning there's one dispatcher sitting there. We have a 26-seat PSE. Our call volume is, just would crush them. And so, no 911 center wants to accept our rollover traffic on our phone system except for Shawnee County. And we've been talking with Shawnee County about doing that, but the state has to purchase a third host system to route that traffic through between Shawnee and ourselves. We would be their backup too, but because of the high call volume, it can't run through the normal circuits. If one circuit was down, which is what would cause that, and so, we are working through purchasing that third circuit or system to allow that to happen. But it's, almost every 911 center in Kansas has that rollover capability, but again, some of those PSEPs only get one call during the overnight hours once a week. That's not the reality for us, and so, we have to be a good partner and not overwhelm them.
So, the advantages that we were briefed on for having this enhanced 911 don't work for Sedgwick County?
Not in the current state.
So, is there a fix to that? I guess I'm kind of worried because I thought the whole reason that we were going to enhance 911 was so that if we went down, someone else would pick it up.
I wouldn't say that was the whole reason. That was one selling point of it, of course. And so, the fix for it is to purchase that third host, that third circuit that would allow us to shift calls between Shawnee County and ourselves.
But it's only Shawnee County that can pick us up? Johnson County couldn't?
Johnson County's not on the same system. So, yeah, it's really, there's just no other center that has enough personnel there to take their own 911 calls and ours.
So, I think we got some more work to do on enhanced 911 because that's not really the way that it was briefed to me, at least in my mind. I thought that we had a system where we went down, someone else would take over, and it doesn't sound like that's the solution.
Not, no, no. It's not, not right now, no. And I'm happy to, we can certainly discuss that more, and I can show you what that looks like with that third circuit in there or the third server in there, but you're correct. Right now, it's...
It kind of worries me because I thought that we had total redundancy, that someone else would take over. So, what it looks like is that we're going to take over if Kingman County goes down, like suddenly we'll take care of it. So, we're, everybody's relying on us, but we can't rely on anyone else.
We don't have anybody's 911 calls rolling to us when they go down, so they have all worked with their other agencies. Because again, the same thing, we are trying to manage our own very large call volume, and so, we're not, we're not picking up any other county's calls.
So, do we need to look at something other than enhanced 911?
That gets into, I'm not sure, I guess, what you mean by enhanced 911 because I think we may have differing definitions of what that is. So, I don't know how to answer that without understanding more of what your view of that is.
Well, when the secretary came in, remember, a couple of years ago, and we kind of said, well, this is great because everything's redundant. Somebody goes down, like it all gets taken care of. That wasn't true.
The redundancy that we have that other 911 centers don't have in this state is these two circuits coming out of the two hosts that are geodiverse. Those are the redundancies that I'm pushing back on the Coordinating Council to say, hey, this is not working as promised. You need to, you need to evaluate this because we really should not ever get to a point with the redundancy built in at multiple layers to where we're ever needing to roll over to our internal backup site or to another county. It should never get that far. So, they need to fix that piece before it even gets to that point of the discussion. At that junction where we are, when these redundancies fail, you're absolutely right. I think we need to, this third circuit that we're talking about is something that's on the agenda for 2022 with the Coordinating Council, if I understand correctly. That needs to be implemented. We need to be able to roll back and forth between Shawnee County and us as what would be like a fourth safety net. And then, the question is, why do we have to have four safety nets? And so, these are the discussions I'm having with the council of, I should not have to have all these layers of redundancy just to trust this system to work. That doesn't work for me.
Right.
That's the conversation we're having.
Okay. Well, I guess it's concerning that they would take down Shawnee, the only backup that we have, and us at the same time. That sounds to me like somebody wasn't thinking ahead at AT&amp;T or at the Coordinating Council to allow both major places that back up each other to go down. But one final question is, did our alternate site out at WSU, did it go down too? If we could have gone out there, would it have worked?
The alternate site at Wichita State is not, is not a backup to our main site in the sense of a different phone system. It is to spill over to, if we were to have a surge, whether planned or otherwise, we can go up to there, but it all connects into that same AT&amp;T phone system. So, our backup really is that Cisco phone system that's completely off of that state system that really worked beautifully for us.
Okay. So, WSU wouldn't have worked at all?
No. That's not what that's designed to do.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
If I could say, I would love to sit down and discuss some of this with you further to better understand what your point of view is, but also to help clarify some things that, yeah.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. So, is our work with the Coordinating Council, is that mandated by statute? Like, why do we have to go through them? Can we just contract with AT&amp;T ourselves?
We can, yes. So, when we looked at, we needed a new phone system. We looked at doing a standalone, on our own, purchased without the Coordinating Council, purchased without this, leveraging this buying power of all the 911 centers coming in together. It was quite a bit more expensive for less being for our budget. We weren't going to have the, as we were moving into the ESI net, or ESI net, as we were moving into text to 911, as we move forward into video to 911, that capability wasn't going to be there at a price point that we were able to afford.
What was the price point? Do you remember?
I'd have to go back and look. I can send that to you, though, where we ended up with it.
Yeah. I'd like to see that. Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thanks, Alora. Commissioner Lopez?
Just one thing. I don't, coming in, I know the system has been in place before I got here, so I would love to sit down with you sometime and just kind of have an overview of the whole system and how it runs. And then, maybe, I know Commissioner Cruz sat with someone for an afternoon. I would love to do that, too. So, if we can get that scheduled, I would appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Alora, on this, on this item, if you need, if you could coordinate with Rusty or Tom, if you need us to write a letter or make some phone calls, I'm more than happy to support that if that...
Absolutely.
I don't want to interfere, but if it would help, because this is pretty serious stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if it's, if it's you calling them and the Coordinating Council, and if you feel like you're not making progress, I think you just let us know right away, and I think we can mark up a letter or communication to them, for sure. It's very serious.
Absolutely.
This was part of the 50 cents bill that we, part of our legislative platform that we did a few years ago? Is that what it was?
So, yes, part of the, of the 87 cents I wanted to see, and I'm sorry.
Whatever, yeah, whatever it was.
Yeah. There's a portion of it, it's allocated in different ways. There's a portion that goes to the Coordinating Council. There's a portion that goes to subsidized counties that don't collect as much, and then some comes into our coffers. We use what comes into our coffers to pay for our, to pay our bill to the Coordinating Council for the phone system.
Okay. I thought they were intertwined. Okay.
They are and aren't all the same. Okay. But yes, I will let you know if we need that assistance or support. Okay. So, now, on to some other issues at 911. You guys are well aware, and I know there's been a lot of speculation about the attrition rate or great resignation that's impacted 911 as it has other industries. We right now have 24 open positions, so that's, we obviously need to start filling positions, of course, and are working to do so. I'm thankful that we have some support from the county to do so, and then we're going to be rolling out a hiring bonus to pull people in. We have on the agenda some pay increases, but money is only one facet of that, and it's a small facet of it. Excuse me. One thing I want to be very assured of for you is that while we have seen people leaving, things are not in dire straits over at 911. So, looking at, we always go off of 90% of calls answered in 15 seconds. We, which is the industry standard for call answering, we are better off today with those numbers than we were in June of 2020 or June of 2019. So, we are answering 83.75% of calls within 15 seconds. We are not making that 90%. We haven't ever, since we started tracking that. That is our goal. But we are at 3% from June of 2020 and up about half a percent from June of 2019. So, we are not seeing a dramatic decrease in the performance that our staff is providing. The folks that are there are working very hard because they know what that means to get those calls answered, so I want to acknowledge that. But we certainly, as we're rolling into what has been termed sociologically as the great resignation, you guys have been tracking this nationally. There's about 4 million workers in the U.S. that quit in April total. So, this is not something that is unique to 911. That was put out from the Labor Department, and that's the highest number that they've seen since they started tracking this 20 years ago. So, to clarify, we are amongst a lot of people looking to fill seats and to see what is going on within their departments. Coming out of the pandemic, one thing we noticed is that people were reevaluating everything. I think in my own life, we've reevaluated quite a bit of things. And that includes what they want in a workplace, where they feel safe, where they feel appreciated, where they want to spend their time, as they recognize that that time is so critical. So, we at 911 have also decided that there's a time to reevaluate here, and we want to break out of the mold of what we've been doing, what 911 as an industry does, and we want to reimagine 911 in Sedgwick County. And I think we can do that without compromising our mission of serving our citizens, but we, from the top down, can serve our employees who then serve our citizens, and the focus is shifting over there. So, we've had a great advancement of technology at 911, but if I were to be honest, we've been really stagnant in operations and culture, and it's time to start advancing that as well. So, what we did is we met with a leadership operations coach who donated some time to us, and we came up with a set of standards to start guiding us. And may I give you guys a copy of this?
Sure.
Come on. Thank you.
Can I pass them? Excellent.
I'm very happy to have this to provide some clarity in how we want to move forward. I'm not going to read through all of this, but I want you to have it so you know what our mindset is as we're learning a new way of doing business over there and serving our team. So, excuse me. We have on here radical responsibility, servant leadership. We are a safe place, and that is one that I think we want to make sure that our employees feel safe to be there, that they feel supported, that they feel like they have a good work environment, that they can be people outside of work also. Equitable access, that's both for employees and for our citizens. Mission focused, and then lastly, celebration is on our set of standards. We want to make sure people know that their good work is being celebrated. So, that's for you to, again, be aware of. So, we created a set of standards. We came out of that with a 75-day plan on what we wanted to do to start shaking up our system. Part of that 75-day plan is that all systems and processes that we have are up for audit right now. We need to look at everything we're doing, both in the employee realm of disciplinary action, quality improvement evaluations, general annual evaluations, and everything on the phone side, what the community hears and feels when they call 911. Do they feel heard? Do they feel like their emergency is handled quickly? Do they feel like it's handled professionally? And what it is, are we celebrating those times that we do those great jobs? So, we're auditing all of those processes, and we're getting our staff involved in that auditing. We want to know that when they're on the phone, they feel empowered to make decisions to help our community, that they feel like they can ask good questions, and they don't have to ask questions that they feel hold no value, and that they can serve our mission by serving our community in a way that aligns with what their heart is for what they're doing. They have tremendous hearts of service. We want that to be able to shine through. So, we're auditing our systems. We're seeking feedback from our team. We've sent out a survey that's for 911 staff. We're asking them, what do you want to audit? Those that are doing the work, what works, what doesn't work? They are sitting there day in and day out at the console, doing the work. They know what works, they know what doesn't. We want to hear from them. And then, really important, we're getting feedback on the leadership team as a whole, but especially me. Everything starts with me. I can't turn the lens on anybody else until I start with myself. And so, we want to know what is working, what isn't, what can we improve, what needs to be done differently, and what do we want to retain? Because there are good things over there that we do want to retain. Again, we're creating those opportunities for celebration. We want to be more strategic in acknowledging that success, and so, we're working towards that. And then, we're creating opportunities long-term for staff to get feedback. We don't want to just do this one-off survey, go forward, make some changes, and leave it there. We want to create that path for them to come in, to provide that feedback in whatever way they feel safe to do so, and that gets back to that principle of safety and them being engaged at that level. So, that's our 75-day plan, in a nutshell. I mean, it gets down into the weeds of it, and we are just really looking to create something new that no 911 center has ever seen, and certainly not this one. And I'm really excited about the opportunity. Go ahead, Peter.
Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I know addressing concerns like this in front of a room full of people, where you're grilled from a bench, is not the funnest thing. So, I appreciate you stepping up to the plate to discuss this topic with us. Just a few questions around, when did you reach out to this leadership operations coach?
Oh, month and a half ago, maybe? I'd have to go back and see when exactly.
Okay. So, and then, the survey that you sent out, how are those, could you just explain how those, those results are coming in? Who receives those results? And then, how long it's going to be to evaluate and then present the findings?
Yeah. So, we are, I am receiving those results, and I'm sharing it with our leadership team. We'll share it out with our entire team, and then with county leadership, including my assistant county manager, who I answer directly to, and then the county manager. We were going to do that electronically through a survey link, and that did not work out as we had hoped it would. And so, now, we're having people, they can either handwrite them and submit them anonymously, which I've received some that way. They can send them in with their name attached that they feel comfortable, and I've received a lot that way. And so, that's how it will be collected and shared out. But really, we want this to create a bigger conversation about what do we want, those that are there working? What do we want to see, and how do we want that to carry forward? And then, getting them involved in those decisions.
That's great. So, this, the 70-day, the 75-day plan, is there, is that printed anywhere? Can we, can we see that?
I can send it to you, sure.
Yeah. How can we, we kind of see? I'm just kind of curious to see kind of how that would play out. And then, how long is the survey going till?
I think it goes through the end of this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, then, will you take like a week or so, or how, what is your timeframe in which you're going to kind of collect all of those and then really evaluate the next steps? What's that timeframe?
So, we do what's called a squad meeting before shifts, and we had suspended them for the summer as we were moving into a different schedule, and we go back to those regular squad meetings before shifts on August 8. So, that's where my goal is to have those compiled and pulled together to go in, into the squad meetings, starting that first week back, and start discussing, okay, here's what we have, here's what we collected, how do we put this into action? It's great to collect those... put this into action? It's great to collect those ideas, but you have to be able to move that ball forward. And so how do we move it forward? But I don't want to be the only one deciding how to move it forward. You know, that making decisions in a vacuum doesn't work, and so I need them to also provide their input on what they want to see. And part of this is, is this, we can't keep doing the same thing the same ways, and so I can't keep making the decisions. They've got to have, they've got brilliant ideas. And so pulling those in, so that's a very long answer to your question. And by August 8, I want to have those together to start discussing them out with our team and engaging them on how we change this. We start a new evaluation period on November 1, and that's why it's a 75-day plan. It's less than 75 days now, because there's a lot of things that have to go into play by November 1. They have to know, my staff has to know, what is the metrics you're measuring us by on this evaluation by the time we start that evaluation period? So we've got a lot of changes that have to be made very quickly.
So I know that there is a current grievance policy. Sedgwick County has a grievance policy where employees, if they have an issue or a concern with management, they can go and fill out this grievance policy. Tom and I have been working to maybe revamp that a little bit so that it's more easily accessible for folks. What is the process, after they come from HR over to your shop, what's the process in helping your employees understand the process of filing a grievance should they have one?
Anytime anybody has any, has, voices any concern that they want to go to HR, file a grievance, whatever, they're provided a copy of that policy from the county. They're provided the phone contact information for our employee relations, person over HR, their phone and email. And also, if they want to, scheduled appointments during work hours, they're provided that time to go over there. We would never tell them, no, you know, that you're on the clock, go on your own time. We would certainly let them go during work hours. And, but that's probably a system, again, that needs to be audited. How do we make that more readily available to our staff?
Yeah, I think we're doing that across the board, so it's not just 911, for sure. The last question I have, Alora, would be, when you said you do your huddles, what did you call it?
The squad meetings.
Squad meetings, okay. Is that everybody from the person who just started that day to the highest person within the, on that shift?
Yeah. So everybody that's working that shift is in that meeting. And it's a supervisor-led meeting. There includes information, anything they need to know, whether we're burning, whether there's a suspect that's outstanding that law enforcement's looking for. And then training is also done during that time.
Okay. I appreciate you answering all those questions, Alora. And thank you for setting up this, this plan. It looks like there's a, there's a plan in place, and I'm excited to see the outcome.
I do. Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, Laura, I don't see any other questions. But thank you, and thanks for being proactive on this before even this was going on in your mind. And so I really appreciate your leadership and your flexibility.
Absolutely. I'd love to come back in 75 days and update you with what we've done.
Okay. See you in 75 days.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Alora. Commissioners, today's agenda includes a discussion regarding county commission redistricting and an update on COVID-19 fiscal response. With that, Chairman, I'll hand the meeting over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Emily, and welcome to the podium, yourself, for filling in. With that, we'll call then another special meeting of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday, July 27. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meister?
Present. Next item, please.
New business. Item A, discussion regarding county commission redistricting.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. A number of, all of you over the past several months have asked one time or another about county redistricting. It's something that the county has to do every 10 years, and we do this in accordance with the decennial census, which has been occurring in this country since 1790, and I think 2020 is the 24th such census. Normally, the 2020 census was to be available April 1, but because of COVID and other delays, we now believe the census is going to be coming out. And we got this information from Stephen Banks, who's the MAPD senior planner over there. We think we're going to have now the census figures on August 16. So we thought this would be a good time, prior to the census figures coming out, to give you kind of an overview of the redistricting process. And with us today, Michael Fessinger in my office is going to talk to you a little bit about the legal issues involving redistricting. We have Jack Joseph from GIS, who's then going to display some of the new software we have that we're going to use in coming up with the new maps, redistricting maps for you guys. So with that, I'll just turn this over to Michael Fessinger.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. As Mike Papoon said, we're just going to go through a little bit about the process of redistricting and some of the legal issues that surround this process. So I think, as you all know, redistricting is the process by which we shift the borders or the boundaries of the commissioned districts, each district pertaining to a commissioner in reaction to population growth within our county. And the end result, of course, would be five new commissioned districts. These districts need to possess certain characteristics dictated by Kansas law. They need to be equal in population, and they need to be as compact as possible. And we'll break both of those down. We'll unpack both those terms here in a moment. But I think more pressing than that is, what is the process by which we actually redistrict? How is it accomplished? We look to Kansas law for that, KSA 19204, 19-204 governs this, and it says that redistricting is done by resolution, and that is the guidance that we get from Kansas law. And if we look back at how redistricting has been accomplished in the past, we see that it has been done by resolution in this county. As I understand it, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but this commission is typically presented with between eight and 10 scenarios, maps that have been generated by staff, each describing a different orientation of five districts that have been shifted to be equal in population and as compact as possible. And then this commission is then able to vote on which resolution pertaining to which scenario that it will adopt. And so your staff will undergo that process, at least that's our recommendation, that you allow your staff to undergo that process and bring these scenarios to you for your review and eventually your, your analysis and your action. So I think that's the basics of how I think that process ought to go. Of course, we're reacting to the release of the census information, which, as Mike said, will come in the middle of August. I'd like to drill down a little bit on population equality and compactness, and why that's important, that we strive for those two characteristics. When we think about population equality in different commissioner districts, what we're really thinking about is equal access to representation by commissioners. If we have one district that has more people in it than another district, the district with more people, they enjoy less power at the ballot box. They enjoy less voting power compared to a district that has less people in it that, you know, district, hypothetical district number two has one commissioner as well, so they have more representation in county government because less people are sharing one commissioner. So the law tells us that our commissioner districts need to be equal in population so that everybody has equal access to county government, equal representation under county government. A variance of plus or minus 5% population appears to be acceptable, but I view that as an endpoint, not as a starting point. I think, you know, when we redistrict, we want our districts to be viable for years to come. I think if we end up after a certain period of years at plus or minus 5% population variance between districts, I think that's a good goal. I think that upon redistricting, we should strive for something more in the realm of plus or minus 1/4 to 1/2 a percent population variance. So we'd like your districts to be as equal in population as possible, but every district doesn't have to be absolutely equal for people. Again, just a very slight variance between them should render us in compliance with Kansas law. Compactness is a bit of a more complicated term. It features heavily in Kansas law for how we need to draw our districts, but it's not really defined by our statutes. The courts have been called upon to analyze compactness in the past, not necessarily regarding Sedgwick County, but other counties where their redistricting processes have been challenged. Compactness refers to territory that is closely united. And so that is really what we're striving for in your districts, territory that is closely united. But of course, we know that compactness is sort of subordinate to population equality. And we see that principle in action today when we, when we look at the map and we see the Commissioner Dennis's district right now is far larger than the other four districts because he represents areas of less population density. So in order for Commissioner Dennis to get enough people in his district to equal your other districts, he has to encompass more, more land. So when I say that compactness is subordinate to population equality, that's what I mean. His district is less territorially united. It's larger, encompasses more territory, but he gets the same amount of people that everyone else gets. The issue of compactness comes into play in the courtroom when a plaintiff hypothetically asserts that a commissioned district is not as compact as possible. And the reason that the district was not drawn as compact as possible is because the commission that was in charge of drawing the district, they weren't really thinking about territorial unity, but instead they were thinking about demographics, political party affiliation, things like that. And of course, what a plaintiff would be asserting is that gerrymandering has occurred. Courts, however, seem very reticent to declare that gerrymandering has occurred, especially if there's no evidence of it. Evidence might be in the form of statements made by staff or commission that, you know, I find this area desirable because I think these people might support me, or they may not support me, so it's not desirable, something like that. I would encourage us to not really think of this process in that manner, and instead really focus again on population equality and territorial unity. That said, you're given wide latitude to draw the districts and the boundaries as you see fit. Our courts have declared that it's okay to split cities. Of course, we see that Wichita is split between your five districts. You can even split smaller cities if that's what you think is the right decision. You can draw boundaries along notable geographic features, rivers. You can draw boundaries along city streets. You can even split up individual city wards. These are different things that have been challenged in the past, and the court has said, no, it's okay, because this is a compact district and it's equal in population. There is one practical rule that we need to adhere to, and that is that we can't split voting precincts. And again, that's just a practical consideration. Every individual, everybody in the same voting precinct needs to be voting in the same commission race. So that is the one thing that we need to consider as we go about this. So back to the process, then. We recommend just a return to the process that has been done in the past, which is that you allow disinterested staff members to produce eight, 10 hypothetical redistricting plans for your analysis and your consideration, and that after viewing that, we, in an open meeting, you discuss and perhaps coalesce around one that you all find acceptable, and then you vote and pass a resolution adopting that new map for the county. Let me check my notes and see if there's anything that I forgot. I don't think so. I think at this point, we're going to see a tech demonstration of new software, that we are able to feed in the latest census data to the software, we're able to tell the software, don't split voting precincts, and then that software can produce hypnosis for you. So I can step aside at this point. Before I do so, are there any questions that I can answer for you before I go?
Well, thanks, Mike. Thanks for clarifying that voting precincts, each precinct has to stay intact.
That's right.
And that was a clarification. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question. So assume we get through this process and we adopt a resolution, at which point in the, in the election cycle does that take effect? Does it take effect immediately?
It would take effect when the resolution, you know, says it would take effect, I would imagine, within the next couple of weeks, if not immediately.
So like 2022 or something? It doesn't like a future date. It's usually right when the resolution's up. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. We're ready for the next presentation here.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jack Joseph, GIS Director. Wanted to provide just a quick overview of the software that we will be using for the redistricting effort. We primarily use GIS software from a company called ESRI, Environmental System Research Institute. They are like kind of the gold standard, global standards, GIS software company. The county has been using this software company for quite a while. We use them on a daily basis, on an enterprise level, on a, just a desktop computer level to mobile levels. So this is a redistricting solution by them that we've purchased. We have one license that we will be using the software with, and just kind of immediately here, since the 2020 census data has not been released yet, we are looking at the current district boundaries and the 2010 census data here in the background. And then we've created some very simple examples of some changes in those districts based on the older data. But immediately, you can see the districts here in the middle, and then the table below, District 1, 2, 3, 4, and then there's 5. It will immediately show the population for each district, as well as the deviation of population per district and the deviation percentage per district. And as we initially review the 2020 census data, we would go in, and as I zoom in, you can begin to see the census blocks, the individual census block data with individual populations per census blocked area. So if we wanted to...
Jack, are those, are those precincts? Or what do you mean by a census block?
So a census block is the smallest area of population designed, designated by the census. There are tracks, which are larger, block groups, and then blocks are the smallest level of population area. And we will use the smallest level to be as, as precise as possible with our boundaries.
Okay.
So just as an example to, to show how the software works, if we wanted to move these census blocks from District 4 to District 2, could easily come in here, select District 4, or let's see, select District 2, select these census blocks, and immediately shift them to District 2 from District 4. And then you can see immediately the totals per district, the target deviation changes and the percentage changes. So it will take a little bit of evaluation once those new numbers come out to see where these shifts might occur. As previously mentioned, we will create eight or so scenarios where we've shifted some in one place and not in others, but primarily, we are looking at that population, the total population, that target deviation of 5% or, as explained, much lower. And then there's also some built, with this particular software, there's some built-in checks and balances. So there are some integrity checks just built right in, so we can make sure that there is not a census block or an area that's assigned to two districts, a population check on the background, the total district counts checks, the minimum deviation that we're talking about, that's built in check. Any sort of census block that is not assigned that may have been missed or, or unselected in our, in our movement of the boundaries, that is checked. And then the connectivity check to make sure there isn't some sort of island area that's not connected to, that's been assigned, that's not connected to the district. And then there are plenty of charts and graphs here that we can use as well that'll show the percentage of population per district as we go through and create the difference. the percentage of population per district as we go through and create the different plans. Change that again to the deviation. This is just the, these are just the raw number deviations here. That's why it looks, that pie chart looks a little odd, but, and then the percentage of deviation. So what we plan on doing is, again, creating that, the eight different scenarios or so. Since we only have one license of this specific redistricting software, we're going to export that out into something's called a redistricting dashboard. This is similar to the COVID-19 dashboard that is out there that we've created. And we intend on having the exact same information that we were using in that software within this dashboard. So you would easily be able to see the total population per district in that same looking pie chart. Total population for each district in a bar chart. And then the population deviation per district also as a chart. Yes?
Commissioner Cruz has a question.
So when you drew the, the boundaries and you had the census blocks selected, how did those translate to precincts?
So census blocks, there is a process to submit to the census, those precincts throughout kind of the, in between the 10 years. So they should be already pretty much aligned with the precincts, the census block boundaries and the precinct boundaries. If there is a small change, we do have some software where we can exactly align that from the precinct, from the census block line to the precinct line. So if it, if it's off or generalized.
I mean, that was, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, that's, you can't split up precincts. So I guess that's, I'm just wondering how they correlate on the map when we're looking at?
Yeah, I don't have the precinct, we can add in any sort of additional layers to this map. I don't, I just, I don't have them loaded here.
Okay.
But we can add those as an additional layer to make sure that that topology is what is called, that line work is not overlapping.
Okay. Thank you.
Jack, my question would be, so these eight scenarios or whatever, so this is your group and legal and?
Yeah, so it's going to be our group that are, that will be using the software. We're going to work very closely with the, with the Counselor's Office on any, anything that comes up and reviewing each plan. A lot of back and forth, yes.
Right. And so the plus or minus 5%, I assume one or two scenarios will take into account that population towns like, or cities like Derby, Growth, Mays, Growth, do you, because we're still, when we're making a decision for 10 years, is that right? It's still 10 years that we, we will do the resolution for?
Yeah, I don't know if we'll have projected data. I think we're just going to use the 2020
Okay. Well, I get it. I mean, we could do, we could do a plus or minus zero and, and divide it exactly 100,000 or whatever it's going to be per, but I just was wondering if there's any, since we're making a decision today for the next 10 years, I didn't know if there's any trends in growth or if that's even legal to consider. I'm not sure.
Mike Fessinger again. You should be focusing on the census data as it stands right now and not really looking for, even though we know probably some areas will grow faster than others, we shouldn't be considering what will ha, what might happen or what will probably happen, just the numbers as they are now.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So I've received a couple of questions around expanding the commissioned districts from five to seven. How does that play in this? And could you address that, Mr. Papun?
Commissioner Cruz, Mike Papun again, County Counselor. That's a good question, and it's separate from the presentation we're doing this morning, but I'll be happy to answer. I've looked into it a little bit. If the commission were to decide to go to seven commissioned districts at some point, that would take a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners and have to be in a general, a general election. I think the earliest that could be is 2022. And it's, and it's entirely separate process. If, if the voters were to adopt going to seven commissioned districts, then at that point, we'd have to then redistrict again into seven commissioner districts using the same criteria that you've heard this morning of drawing the boundaries and keeping them compact and equal in population and so on. But that would take a separate process, wouldn't occur until at least fall of 2022, and would have to be done, I believe, by January 1 then, or the governor would be drawing the districts, if I recall the statute correctly, but.
So January 1 of 2022 would have to, the resolution would have to be?
For 20, January 1 of 2023, the, the districts would have to be put in place.
Okay. So August 16th is when this data is going to be available for the current census? So going back to our current topic, if, if that data is dropped on the 16th, how long does, what is the process in which we get to this? How long does it take? What should the community expect? Is there going to be an open process, an open forum where people can be in the audience while we're doing this? What, what is, how is this going to play out for transparency sake, for the public?
Well, I think one of the reasons for bringing this to you early and getting a start on it is to get the commission's thoughts on how, how you want to proceed after we present this data. I would assume you'd want to give us at least two or three weeks to put this information together and come up with some proposed maps, if that's what the commission would like. And then I would say we'd schedule a special staff meeting or something to discuss the data we have, go over that and show you the different maps and, and then there probably might be a period of time after that, we want to digest that and then have another public meeting in which citizens can come in and other stakeholders and give you input on what they, they think about the maps. And that's, this is a process that's completely guided by, by you. All we have to do is have these maps drawn up as soon as possible, prior to the end of the year. And how we get there is going to be largely driven by the county commission.
So is there, is there a way to get this on the calendar? If we know the date that this data is going to drop, it's going to take you, what, two, two to four weeks to draw maps? That would be in the middle of September. So we're talking, August 16th is a Monday, 21, 2, 3, 4, maybe September 13th, week of September 13th? Is that appropriate?
I'm, I'm seeing September 13th as a Monday, but September 14th would be a staff that we could target?
Sure. I mean, if that's the will of the commission, I just wanted to make sure that we give enough time for the public to attend and that it's advertised well, so we can get people in, in the audience. Is that the will of the commission? Anybody have any thoughts?
Hello, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the update on the process that we're going to go through. And I guess my question may be tangential to the actual process, but it looks like it starts with the precinct level. And I guess, how were precincts initially established and can they ever change?
Precincts do change primarily when, when cities would annex new property, a precinct would change. Mike, did you want to maybe kind of expand on that as well?
Mike Fessinger, sorry for the delay. I was just confering with Mr. Papun. I, I agree with, with what was already said. I also think that there's some pull from the state on, on the makeup of precincts, but we'll, we'll check into that and get you a better answer on that.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask, I've been a precinct committee man for a lot of years. And what I see, for example, we have Sheriff Easter in the office. He was actually placed in the office initially by the precinct committee men and women because the previous sheriff resigned early and we voted to have Sheriff Easter become the new sheriff. He was already elected, but it was kind of a formality. But as I looked at that process, we've got precincts that are very, very, very small, may have 25 or 30 people in them. We've got precincts like the one that I represent are very, very, very large. And yet every precinct had one vote when it came to the time to put Sheriff Easter into office. And the same thing happened just recently over in the city of Wichita where Jared Cirillo was put in. It was by the precinct votes. But there's an imbalance. The people don't have an equal vote because the precincts aren't all the same size. So I guess I'm kind of confused on why that that is our basis of doing all of this, but it's, it, there's a total imbalance in the size of precincts. Granted, we're going to balance ours based on the total population, but precincts do have an impact. We've just seen it several times where the people have been put into office by a precinct vote, where that every precinct does not represent an equal number of people.
Commissioner, we'll be happy to look in to see how precincts are created and what steps we take in to change that and get back with you.
Thank you. So back to a tentative timeframe, the middle of September for a staff meeting, was that work in your, in your world? And then, and then we'd have a public, maybe eight goes down to, I mean, just hypothetical, eight maps will digest down to two or three, and then we maybe take public comment at a, at a regular meeting and then make a, make a vote, something like that?
So would that be, the initial presentation would be, what, that week in September? And then would there be time to discuss afterwards? Or is all this going, are you suggesting or stating that all of this would be right around this, in the same day or within weeks of each other?
Within weeks, probably. Right. Yeah, we're going to have to do a lot of digesting and adjusting, I think.
Sure.
Has anybody been, I went through a, at this, have you been through a?
At the state level, yes.
At the state level? So my rec, my, in 2011, I was elected at the city and it was a year into this. And so I was involved in, in the city council redistricting. And it kind of went some back and forth and some adjustments, similar. This is a better map than what we were working on 10 years ago. But I don't recall, I think it went to a public, you know, agenda item with a couple of maps or something, but they were, the public didn't have a lot of, there wasn't a lot of turnout for public input, but that's not to say that it, it could happen. You have a citizen saying, I want to be in this district and that district, but it doesn't. That's my recollection. It kind of went through a process pretty decently, if I recall.
I, I look at this almost like a budget process. The commission will have staff meetings and we will talk about it publicly
Right.
and begin to focus and narrow it down. But when we get narrow to one or two, then we drive it to a meeting and it will, if I'm understanding the, the process from Mr. Fessinger, the commission would have to then formally vote on, on the issue, which that would be the summation of that. I think we just, we started on September 14th and we go as frequently or as much as the commission desires
Yeah.
and hopefully drive it to a vote as soon as possible.
Okay. Got a couple more questions or comments. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to that last point, I, I guess we certainly want to get through this process and do a great job. And I agree with Commissioner Cruz, we need to have the public's input. And to that, to that end, do we have a date we have to have this done by? Is there a deadline to have this completed?
That's a good question. State law says that we should accomplish this, this as soon as possible, but delays from the introduction of census data to the redrawing of districts in some counties, that has stretched to be over a year. And the court has said, well, that was done as soon as possible for that county. So I mean, we should, we should be working on this, but there's no hard and fast delay, although I, I think we should keep it.
I guess my perspective is this is extremely important. One of the, one of the most important things we do that deals with, anything that deals with elections is extremely important and representation is extremely, extremely important. I hear, what I'm sensing right now is almost a, a desire to really rush this forward. And I, I think that we ought to at least have the cab boards weigh in. And I think if we have more public hearings and take our time and examine these maps and take in public comment, that's, that's going to make this a better process. And so I don't have an arbitrary goal to rush this forward and get to a conclusion in September. If this takes till another month or so, that's, that's perfectly acceptable. I, I think we, I think we know when we're ready to move forward, but it, to set a timeline on the very, very first, first discussion, I don't know that it's necessary that we ought to do, we haven't even experienced any of this process yet. So I don't want to set a deadline on when we think it's going to be done. I think we need to, to go through this process and when we see that deadline, or see what the, the conclusions approaching, we'll know that. We can set that in the agenda and of course, we can get that resolution passed. But I, I would rather not just be arbitrary and pick a date. I don't think that's the way to go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Who, when you talked about these districts need to be as compressed as possible, I guess who makes that determination? Because I was looking at Riley County and they, I mean, their districts are not even connected. I mean, they have, part of their district is here, part of it's here. I mean, how are, how are they allowed to be so different than what we're, and I'm not saying that I think that's the right way to go. I'm just asking why it's so different.
So compactness gets analyzed in the courtroom. So for that to have happened, a plaintiff, a voter in the county needs to have brought a lawsuit that says, hey, my, my rights are being infringed upon because I'm in a district that's not compact. So the less compact the districts are drawn, the more legal risk we subject the county to. You're correct, the districts don't need to be contiguous. They also can be drawn in odd shapes as determined by the population density of the county. And I think that that's really, when we say that compactness is subordinate to population equality, we, we know that we're not going to have five neat blocks because our population isn't spread out that way. That's not a great way to, to draw five equal commissioned districts. So I've not looked at the maps of Riley County, but I'm not surprised to hear that there are some odd shapes there. And, and that can happen, especially when we are creating five districts of, of equal population. But you're correct that there is some wiggle room in the compactness department. But again, the, the less compact, the less territorially united we draw the districts, that, that could, that could cause some legal risk to the county.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make myself abundantly clear. I am not trying to rush anything by asking for dates. I am trying to make sure that we are 100% clear in communicating with our community around how this process will go, and they need dates to plan. And so that's why I would like to get on the calendar, not for rushing at all, but to communicate with our constituents around the maps and boundaries that could be changing. So if this takes as, if this takes months to do, that's fine, but we need to make sure that we're communicating exact dates and we can't start unless there's a date on the calendar. So I'd like to make sure that we all can come to an agreement around when we're going to get back in this room so that we can include in community members in this process. So again, I'm not trying to rush this by asking for a date. I'm trying to ask for clarification to communicate to our community around how this process will go. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, this is, thank you for that comment. I am just curious, if someone was to file for election by petition and they had a signature in what is the current district and the district boundary changes while they're getting signatures, what's the interpretation? Does that signature count if it's now outside the district or does a signature that's outside the district suddenly count if it gets pulled inside the district? I mean, or is it based, based on the date of the signature? How do we interpret a petition for filing in light of the fact that the district boundaries are changing right then?
My best guess would be that if, if Commissioner were to obtain a signature from a, from a citizen who then is lifted out of that district and placed into another district, my, my guess would be that that would nullify that signature. But I would like to take a close look at that issue and get you a better answer. But that, that is my feeling based upon my research so far. It's not my final answer, though.
I, I would, I would assume it's going to be one way or the other. Either you have to go by the previous district or the future district, but you can't have both. You can't have people excluded from signing, I get, you can't, imagine if you, if someone signs that's not currently in the district and then they gets, now they get drawn into the district, then you're telling me that even though they weren't in the district when they signed the petition, we would count that signature then? Same, same interpretation. We do, you're flipping that both. Other words, if they assign it and they're in the district and they get removed from the district, we wouldn't count that.
That's right.
If someone's outside the district and they sign the petition and they get pulled into the district, we would have to count that one.
Well, I, I suppose so. If, if a signature from outside the district was garnered for that district and then the lines changed, I suppose it might count. The issue is we wouldn't want, and again, I, I would like to, to look at this closer, but the issue would be, you know, someone who wouldn't be qualified to vote for that particular commissioner probably couldn't sign a petition, allowing that commissioner onto the ballot, if that, if that makes any sense.
I, I absolutely agree. I just think we, because the lines will change potentially during the petition signature process, this is a, it's an interpret- process, this is a, it's an interpretation that frankly hasn't been, hasn't been legally determined exactly what would happen. I've already talked to the attorney general about this for, for that matter. I think, I think there's, there's ambiguity on how this is interpreted. And so I, I really don't think there's, there's clarity. But I would like us to settle on what we plan to do. If that was to happen, what, what's the plan at Sedgwick County? How that, how that would be, what, what's the interpretation that we are going to stick to? So however, however we plan to interpret that, let's settle on something, and let's make, be clear on what that's going to be. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, I don't see other comments. Is there anything else on this? Or Mike or Mike? Okay, this is a motion to receive and file. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
There's a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Whitaker?
Aye. Thank you. Thanks again, Mr. Fessinger, for your work and your update. Be ongoing. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, update on COVID-19 fiscal response.
Good morning, Lindsey.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Porusso, your CFO. I am back to follow up on your discussion from last week. And we have several folks in the audience who are going to make sure that we can get you the best answers possible today. So my thanks to them for being here. What I thought we could do is kind of circle back as a reminder of why we're here and why we're talking about this again in a special meeting setting from last week. So last week, you considered an ARPA spending plan. Of that, you approved the bulk. There was a portion related to court backlog and public safety that was tabled to make sure that you got some of your additional questions answered. So those questions were, how long will it take to address the backlog? What will the courtrooms be used for if we remodeled this building to address the backlog? How is that going to then be used long term? And then finally, could we move the noncriminal cases off site? So between Judge Gearing, District Attorney Mark Bennett, and Sheriff Jeff Easter, we have gotten answers to all of those questions. So I just briefly want to cover those answers, and then we can talk about any other questions or discussion you may have. So first of all, to talk about to the point of how long will it take to address the backlog? We have heard very similar answers from both the judge and the DA, in that we are looking into spring of 2024 to get these, the current backlog addressed. Now, all of that, of course, assumes that we begin movement on getting them space, allowing them to hire staff and all of that. So I assume there could be some delays if we delay that decision. The next question then was, how will the courtrooms be used after the backlog is addressed? I shared with you Judge Gearing's response that had, had a lot of good detail, but the short answer to give you from, to answer that specifically, there would be a courtroom for protection from abuse cases. Right now, those are resolved in the jury room. The thought is that those deserve to have their own space. Additionally, last week, there was quite a bit of discussion about specialty courts, the mental health court or a veterans' court. Based on that discussion, this would allow a courtroom to be dedicated to that in the long term. And then finally, we would have the preliminary hearing judge who would have their own space, and so it would be continued to be used for that purpose. Judge Gearing also emphasized that right now, there is no additional space in the courts. There are two public lobbies that have closed recently on the fourth floor in order to accommodate some Court of Appeals judges who are now being housed in our building. And of course, the district attorney has said that he continues to need that additional space to grow his staff as his workload increases. I know he was here speaking to you probably a month or so ago now about the workloads and some of the things that his office is contending with. And then finally, the question, could we move noncriminal cases to another site? And asking that question, it seems somewhat impractical from what we understand in terms of configuring courtrooms off site for short term. The security that's necessary, the fact that it's not just judges and staff that move, it's a civil clerk's office, court reporters, and other support staff. And so to move them off site long term, or I'm sorry, for the short term, and then move them back in seemed impractical when we asked that question. So those were the three questions that were asked from the bench last week. I know we've had other discussions in the meantime, and I'm happy to address any other questions you might have. Otherwise, I would recommend you reconsider approving that court backlog portion of the spending plan.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying, and thank you, Sheriff and Bennett, Mark Bennett, for answering all these questions as well. And who was the other one? Mark and?
Judge Gearing.
Judge Gearing, yeah. Judge, sorry if you're listening. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Lindsey, management staff, for allowing this to have a little bit more time for discussion. I was able to ask the questions necessary to feel confident that what we're doing with our ARPA funds will really set us up for the future. As I've mentioned before, this county government is going to go on long after all of us are here. And so how do we really utilize the resources that are coming into our community with our $50 million that we're getting now and the $50 million, million next year? I did ask a couple of follow up questions to you, Lindsey, that I'd just like to kind of point out, and these numbers are pretty shocking. I asked for the average length of stay in our jail currently. So for folks that are currently in our adult detention facility, the average length of stay in 2019 was 139 days. In 2021, the average length of stay has doubled to 277 days. So when you look at the cost for an inmate that has been there 139 days, that stay equals $8,725 per inmate. The, when you look at how it's doubled to 277 days, that average stay is $17,387 per inmate. If you want to look at all the pretrial felons that are currently in our jail, 753, the cost to house those inmates is $6.6 million. That's a lot of money that is coming out of our safety, our public safety budget. If we look at the cost of 753 inmates for 277 days, the cost is $13.1 million. That's per year. Wow. And so the cost difference between those two is $6.5 million. So when we look at this money and spending for renovation of our court spaces to get these folks through our court system, I think it's imperative to know that we're spending a lot of money just to house folks. Plus, what are they getting? What services are they getting in our jail? You know, how are they being rehabilitated in our jail currently? What are the prevention type services? Now, some of these folks, you know, we'll get into why they're there, but I just think it's important, again, that setting ourselves up for the future is really imperative. And these numbers, quite frankly, are kind of shocking to me. I appreciate you getting these to me. I, I know that tabling this for a week is not always what we want to do, but for me, when I'm spending this kind of money, I want to be able to answer to my constituents and say, okay, I'm spending these millions of dollars, and here's why. I'm an avid supporter of our public safety. I'm an avid supporter of our sheriff, and I think it's important to understand that when we make these kinds of decisions, knowing the impact down the road of moving out of this courthouse, what it will do for an administration building, for those kinds of things, I want you all to know that I don't take those decisions lightly. So I appreciate the time that it's taken to get to this point. Again, these numbers are kind of shocking, which means we need to do something now. So thank you so much for your continued work to help me understand just what an impact this ARPA money will have for our, our general fund, because this, this type of money won't have to come out of our Sedgwick County taxpayer general fund. So thank you so much.
Okay. So I understand there would be some next steps that are, are not known yet, but this is the first step would be to approve this court backlog and public safety budget item. So I would, unless there's any other comments, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points of clarification. So you, when they said, they talked about the spring 2024, is that with this supported change, or is that without?
My understanding is that is with this supported change. I have not asked what it would be without.
I think we should know that. Is there even a chance to even get caught up at all? Maybe we will never get caught up. Is that, is that the interpretation?
I'm looking in the audience to see if anyone's wanting to volunteer to speak to that, or if we can follow up and get that information to you. Mr. Bennett?
Morning, Mark.
So to answer that question, will we get caught up? Caught up is a bit of a relative term. I will say this. Prior to the pandemic, we were, I'll give you a couple of examples to explain what I'm saying. One, we would have maybe 40 to 50 open homicides at a given time. I never had a lawyer with more than five or six homicides that they were handling at a given time. I'm going to use homicides as the end all be all, but that's, start there and work our way down. Case loads were 100 cases apiece, 80 to 100 was a very busy, this is a busy office always. I, you've been on the, some of us have been on the CJCC, or at least been, had that information available. We have tried very hard to keep the numbers at a manageable rate in the jail. So those are the measures by which I would say, and what's normal? The jail is not busting at the seams. Our caseloads are manageable. We have excellent, you know, here's the numbers of homicides we have, that sort of thing. That was a normal year. Right now, we have 280 off grid offenses. Homicides, child sex crimes, that is an astonishing number. I have 117 people waiting trial on homicides. I have attorneys with 150 to 200 cases now as caseloads. So we are at this unique time in terms of having too many cases. To get back to a normal flow, I think we can get that done in the next two and two and a half years. There will, I do, I do not foresee a time in this jurisdiction or in any other, frankly, where we have, well, in this jurisdiction, I can't speak for others. I, I never see a time when we have two to three homicide, people waiting trial on homicides. We have too many homicides in Sedgwick County. And it takes six months to a year to get a homicide case through the system in normal times. So there will always be a, a number of cases that we're going to be working through. But can we get this back to where we were? If that's, if that's our measure of success, yes, I think we can do that in the next two and a half to three years. Maybe, maybe sooner. Part of the problem is, is the human cost of this in terms of, I mean, I understand the financial cost, and it takes too long, but there's actual lawyers who have to go into court. And so for every defense attorney who's going, okay, I'm juggling 15 murders, I'm juggling 80 or 100 or 150 cases. All right. So for instance, two weeks, last week, we tried a homicide case, had a hung jury 11 to one. So that case has to get back into the flow again somewhere. That case is not going to be resolved. It's not a matter of just going, well, just try these things, get it over with. Each, each one requires the full attention of the defense attorney, of the prosecutor, of the judge. It takes weeks to get ready for them. So it's just, it's going to take a while to do that. But I'm maybe going off topic here, but I'm trying to address it the best way I can. I'm, I'm speculating to some extent, but I'm speculating based on 26 years of experience, 24 years of experience in this jurisdiction, and what I know our numbers to be. So I do believe that the investment in, in courtrooms, the investment in prosecutors, the investment from the judges' budget, where they're asking for help with defense attorneys, all of these things are necessary to help us work this down, or will be four or five years, working this down. And I won't be back before this body, because I'll be back to the legislature asking for more time for a suspension of speedy trial.
Just to, again, first of all, thank you for all you do. And, you know, I'm a huge fan of yours, and I appreciate, I know it's a very difficult job, and Sheriff will say the same thing about you. Appreciate your good work for the Sedgwick County. But this, this date right now is nearly three years away. So again, you know, we talk about due process as a, as a constitutional right. I'm concerned about the fact this takes, it takes that long essentially to deal with some of the things that are in our, in our pipeline right now. That's very concerning. I'm sure that I'm not, I'm not alone, and I share that. But it sounds to me like some of this is exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. But this is, excuse me, this is a problem that actually started before, before COVID. And I think it, it made, COVID made it worse, but I think we're, we're not keeping up with essentially with a explosion of crime that you're having to deal with in this community. And
There's a truth to that, yeah. And frankly, part of it is, there's no way to deal with it. We can take grants, we can do, we can use technology, et cetera. But there is, when it comes down to it in a courtroom, it's a fairly, there's, there's an antiquated element to it. It's, it's one person standing up, one man or woman standing up in front of 12 men and women with a man or a woman sitting next to a defendant. There's no substitute for that, and that is a slower process. And that's, to your point, I don't want to delay due process, but due process comes with also the guarantee of an effective representation and an effective trial. And so it's not just the speed of the thing, it's that we have to, the defense attorney has to be ready, the prosecutor has to be ready, we have to put all that evidence on. So
So I'm going back in my mind to a few years back. You probably remember this, I'm sure you can explain it much better than I can, but the Kansas Supreme Court changed essentially the, the way that we manage, if you will, a suspect that's been charged through our criminal justice system. It used to be that you would take essentially the next available judge for the next potential hearing, but they wanted essentially to assign that inmate to a judge, and it essentially slowed the process down a little bit. And as a consequence of that, the State Supreme Court estimated we would need a few extra courtrooms, a few extra judges, because the process was essentially slowed down just a little bit. So the genesis, genesis of our space needs study for the courts was, goes back to that decision that was made. We talked about the DA had, had extra needs for space because body camera footage was a big, was a big issue, for example. And the amount of evidence that's being generated in any cases is huge compared to what it used to be maybe 10, 10 years ago. And so the DA needed extra space. And so we did some things. We provided some extra space, and the sheriff has a new front end to the, to the jail that provides some space over there. We talked about possibly, I've been talking about possibly needing to maybe redo a space needs study, because things have changed significantly over the last couple of years. We've not done another study. So we're kind of leaning back on some old data. At the same time, the, the amount of work that's being pumped through the system is, is obviously going up, no question. I guess we're using ARPA money to deal with essentially the effect of COVID within this criminal justice system. And I, and I don't disagree with that. I think that's certainly important. But I think what we actually have right now is a much bigger problem than COVID. This is, this goes back to that decision by the Supreme Court, goes back to the community crime trends and things like that. So this is an opportunity, but I, I think a real solution here needs to be more comprehensive, simply than focus on a temporary backlog, because really it's not a temporary backlog. It's a backlog that's going to continue to be there and possibly grow, and the space needs are obviously there. My concern is, I, I know right now, we're just trying to essentially take advantage of the ARPA money, create some space, we're sure, we're sure we can use it. I don't know how, how thoughtful we're being by essentially trying to capture this money quickly. And you're welcome to comment on that, but my, my question also then ties into essentially a future decision that we're not talking about right now. We don't know where we end up. We've got 32,000 square feet of office space that a lot of people work in those spaces. We don't know where they're going to end up, even on a temporary basis or a permanent basis, or what the cost is going to be. That's a secondary decision. We're signing up for today when we do this. We have no idea what that looks like in this equation. So as much as I want to solve the problem, and I want to be supportive, I do want to capture the opportunity for the tremendously difficult problems you're dealing with. I think we need to, we need to move forward with that. But I'm very concerned that we're not being as scientific perhaps as I would like, and I don't know what we're, what we're signing up for for the future. We don't know what, we don't know where we end up with essentially 32,000 square feet of current space that's being utilized in this building. We want to translate that to someplace else, and I have no idea what that means in terms of cost for space and, and location. So welcome to comment on anything I just said.
All I'll just say is, to your point about the, the space needs, I mean, obviously, my budget request vis a vis the ARPA money is, is very specific about the things that I think will help my office. The larger conversation about space needs is one that I'll just jump on your back here and go back several years when we started talking about this. I was out of space, and this body, to your credit, I was out of space and this body, to your credit, recognized that, recognized that the sheriff's needs by building the sheriff the extra space for his investigation that allowed me to occupy more space. And so I'm now in a position where I've actually got for the first time in my career in the office, we've got a couple of extra spaces, I could put some new, new lawyers and some more staff to help us with this, this burden. If you hadn't done that, I would literally be out of, I wouldn't have any place to put new lawyers if you gave them to me under ARPA. You'd have to find office space for them somewhere else. So the space needs assessment has been an issue for, for this body and for members of this commission, even before some of you are currently, who are currently on the commission. I recognize that's a difficult issue and one that as the policymakers, you're going to have to wrestle with. I will say, over time, if we're going to pull back and say, what does this community need with respect to, to the intersection of public safety and the courts? Because the courts obviously play a significant role in that. And that is, we need the space to do the work. I think, I'll speak for the judge here and he can correct me if he disagrees, but that goes back to your comments about the Supreme Court's decision to move away from that central assignment system. One of the things the judge is asking for now is going back to that central assignment as, as regards the preliminary hearing docket. That's what that pro tem judge is going to do. So that would move prelims through the system faster. And so doing on the front end, that ought to either get things worked out faster up there at that end, or at the very least move things through the system faster so that we're not waiting for individual judges to do the prelims so we can get jury trials set. So this is the kind of conversation, honestly, Commissioner Howell, that we could sit down and spend for the afternoon. And I'm trying to, a lot of people waiting on their turn up here. Everything you've said, I, I, I understand. And the big picture is there has been a bit of a perfect storm, okay? We have an uptick in violent crime, not an uptick in crime generally, lots of crimes staying fairly static, some of the property crimes. But violent crime unequivocally has gone way up over the last several years. My first year as the DA, we had thirteen murders in the city. Last year we had fifty-nine. Can I tell you exactly what's going on? Methamphetamines? I can continue to talk about the influx of that and the impact that's had on this community. I can talk about the lack of resources for mental health and the people who are out there committing crimes and, and being victims of crimes because of their untreated mental health issues, the untreated drug and alcohol issues. But there's also other things going on. I can't just attribute it entirely to those things. The influx of guns on the street. I mean, there's just any number of things. That's number one. Number two, we had a pandemic that has shook the world in a way that nothing has in over a hundred years. We could never have anticipated that. Hugely impactful on this, this conversation. Third thing is, as you mentioned earlier, we've got an uptick in crime, we've got this pandemic, and on top of that, we do have a change in the way we've always done things. While there were many reasons to go to a decentralized criminal docket, the Supreme Court had their reasons for doing it and it made sense. It would be probably faster right now if we hadn't. We could have judge, whoever's the next judge up, just take a case and go. Yes, it would be simpler right now, but frankly, there's no going back to that at this point. And, and over time, over the tenure, the, the long game, it will, I, I think it'll be more beneficial to us to have the decentralized docket at this point. We've changed so much, I don't know how we go back to it at this point. But yeah, that was another thing that couldn't have, the timing couldn't have been worse with pandemic to have that take place. But all of these things have, have, you know, worked against us to build up this backlog that we're working on now. So probably more than I, I feel like I'm taking up too much space here, but
Just a final comment. Again, I, I agree. I wish that the, the state would allow essentially some, some latitude on the decentralized, decentralized process. It would help us with the backlog. I think that's a good idea. I, I don't know if we can ask for that or at least have some allowance for a while until the backlog is caught up. That's a good idea. And I know that, again, all of you involved, DA Bennett and Sheriff Easter and Chief Judge Garing, I'm a huge fan. I know you guys are doing the very best you can. You have a huge problem and it's not your fault. We have to fund the solution. I get that. But my biggest concern right now is we're essentially, by moving forward, we haven't had a recent, I guess, understanding exactly what spaces are going to be needed, exactly how we're going to use all these spaces. I don't, I, maybe, maybe we have some old plans, I get that, but I'm not sure they've been looked at since we've done a lot of things. And then finally, I think there's about a thirty-five million dollar potentially bill. We don't know what, where that money's going to come from or what that means in terms of an admin space. That's just a number. It could be completely off. Maybe I'm half, maybe I'm, it could be any number, you imagine, but just assume it's a big number like that. We don't know essentially what we're signing up for today by going forward. So that's my concern.
I understand and I, I'll stay in my lane and just tell you what, you know, how, how what I do affects your decision making and obviously it's your decision. Last thing I'll say is to your, your point about long-term, there is a conversation to be had, not about the space needs, but there's a conversation to be had about public safety in this community, between the county and the city at some point. Because long-term, what happens in the city absolutely impacts what happens in the jail and in this courthouse. I don't just take county cases. I take murders from all over the city, I take rapes, et cetera. All the felonies in this jurisdiction come through, flow through this courthouse. And so there's probably an opportunity that's, that, to open up a fresh dialogue with the city on how the two entities can work together.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate you guys taking, giving us this week so we could really dig into this a little bit further and have more clarity because I, you know, when this was presented last week, there were so many questions and I just wasn't comfortable voting because this is such a large dollar amount. So I appreciate that. You know, we've been talking about how we can do things differently because we could build this space and if we don't change anything on how our approach is, then we're going to outgrow it soon again. And so what we've been talking about are these different specialty courts, right? So, you know, the Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, and just addressing things differently. Well, right now, we don't have the infrastructure in place and I think that's important for people to know, to be able to start those. And so this space will allow us to be able to start looking at things and doing things a little bit differently. And then we can tackle some of the long-term problems easier when we have the space available to do it. I think it's also important that we talk about, you know, this has been a conversation for many, many, many years, that the courts need more space. And I think gradually, from my understanding, from outside looking in, it's gradually been getting worse, but then COVID's really what got us to this point where we cannot continue the way we are. So I, I feel like this commission, as it sits now, really has to take on a lot of these problems that have been, can just been kicked down the road for so many years that now we have to really stand up and say, we're at a breaking point, we have to make hard decisions. They weren't popular ten years ago, they're not going to be as popular today because it does cost money. But we don't have an option because we have to be able to take care of the people we serve. And this is a way that we can do it and it's a way that we can start looking at things more proactively. So I am really happy that we were able to have that conversation. I feel so much better after I'm really being able to talk through a lot of that. And when we talk about an admin building, because that's exactly right, I mean, just like Commissioner Howell said, doing this means that we are going to have to look at an admin building. And so we're voting yes on this. We haven't voted on the admin part yet, but that will be the next thing coming. And so I guess I would like you to explain really a little bit about why now is such a good time? Because I know we, we've discussed our debt is in twenty-year plans and we stopped issuing debt right before the Great Recession in two thousand and eight, which means our debt is now falling off and why it, it's a good thing to kind of sustain some of that and not let that dip down. And I'd also mention, just real quick, you know, the average cost of government for Sedgway County between nineteen seventy-two and two thousand and twenty is ninety-eight cents. I mean, we saw that get up to a dollar twenty-seven in some years, like in nineteen ninety-five. In two thousand and twenty, our cost of government for Sedgway County was eighty-five cents. And I think that's really important to highlight because as we do talk about spending money, I think that's just, it's, it's something that I want people to know that we are not, we don't have an outrageous cost of government right now.
Absolutely. You're right, we do have a, a great price of government and that's something we've been proud of, especially the last couple of years. So speaking to the kind of financial management point you mentioned, so what we have is a financial forecast and a five-year capital improvement plan. We know that in those discussions, we have identified things like maybe the comcare crisis center where there may be some opportunities for other buckets of ARPA funding to come in and help. That gives me some concern because right now, if we look at our long-term financial plan, if you remember during our budget hearing and also during the CIP presentation, we talked about the significant retiring debt service that's coming up. To your point, yes. I mean, we did really cool projects like NCAT or Exploration Place or the Juvenile Justice Complex where we have, you know, DA and courts and corrections doing work for juveniles and keeping them generally out of this building. That, that starts to fall off in less than ten years. And so what that means is we have less debt service and that's a great thing. We like to bring down our debt. But the problem becomes that as issues like this come up with space, with other competing interests that we know we have, we will not have a capacity to absorb that as if we keep our property tax rate flat. If we invest those dollars as the debt service falls off, we keep the same tax rate. If we invest that in improving services or expanding services, that then sets an expectation for the community. So that when it comes time to potentially do a bigger project like an NCAT or an Exploration Place, the, the idea is you almost have to go back to either do a tax increase to pay for that, or you have to make significant reductions in services to offset those things. And at that point, both of those things are not great for the public. What we advocate for and the reason we do bond financing is to try and keep things flat and stable so that we can count on an amount from year to year. And if we are able to take something out of the plan that we were going to debt fund, you know, part of the problem becomes then, we want to try and keep that stable so we don't have a shock to the system down the road when things happen. You know, I know Commissioner Howell has talked in the past about maybe trying to make some state budget law changes to save up money to try and do projects. Right now, that's just not a, a real feasible option for us. And so this is a, a good way to do it. Think about, you know, I know when we talked about it yesterday, we're talking about it as a car payment, when you pay off your car. Now you, you find different things to spend that money on. So then when it comes time to buy your spouse's car or your next car, you have to figure out how to reorient your budget to do that. It's kind of the same thing for us, but on a more grand scale. So does that answer a little bit?
No, that does. Yeah, that's really helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And also, if I could just share, I saw the bond buyer index this morning. We have the most insane low interest rates I've ever seen in my life. I'll send that around, less than two percent. And that's for people who don't have our amazing credit rating. So it's also a good time to do debt financing, honestly.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez made a lot of the points that I made, so I won't rehash those. But from my understanding and just being on this commission for two and a half years now, I've heard about space study after space study. And going back to probably two thousand and ten, I wonder how much money we've spent on a space study. I get it, the governments like to study things in order to make financial decisions, but I think we have studied this to death. We understand that there is a space need and a challenge. And I'm not interested in doing another space study because we already know we're out of space. And our, our hand is kind of being forced right now to make some decisions because this ARPA money can only be spent on certain things. So if we're not going to spend this money that is heavily regulated by the Treasury and all the guidance that they send us, what else are we going to spend it on? Now, I would like to talk, just real briefly while you're here, you know, we're not allocating the full amount of money. So we have about twelve million dollars, should this go through today, in addition to that ARPA money that's coming out. So what are we going to spend that on? When is that decision going to be made? Because we have some real challenges. We just heard Mr. Bennett talk about our methamphetamine problem, our mental illness problem. We have a homeless problem. If you guys get a moment, take a gander down to Pica from Thirteenth to Second Street. Just take a little look. We have, we have food deserts. We have so many things in our community that we could, we could really make a dent with. And so what are we going to use? What's the plan for the additional twelve million dollars? And then I, I would be curious if, if we don't spend this money to help our court system plan for the future, which is what we're doing, what are we going to spend that money on?
So to answer the first question about the twelve million that we have in the bank today over and above this amount, plus the fifty million we'll get next year. Obviously, we have gone through a community-wide needs assessment. We received fifteen hundred responses to that survey. That data's being analyzed. We're also in the process now of wrapping up focus groups with different sets of the population, everything from education to business to tourism and all of that. So we will get all of that feedback from those groups. We'll have that information gathered by mid-August. August sixteenth is actually our goal date for that.
That's a big day.
I'm sorry?
That's a big day.
It is a big day. Lots of data coming, census data and community survey data. So we will have that information, we'll compile it and share. We're also working with WSU and others to collect data to make sure if those folks who maybe can't come to the table, whose voice we haven't heard, who maybe didn't respond to a survey, to make sure we understand where those gaps are. We will work with that to craft, to work with you and craft priorities. Now, of course, we want this to be something that we can do as a community. As Commissioner Dennis has pointed out, there's a significant chunk of funding coming to this area through schools and cities and us. We want to be able to work in conjunction with them and come up with strategic plans that can get that money where it needs to go to, to address, you know, those higher priority things, homelessness and things that have been exacerbated by COVID. So the goal would be by the end of the year for you all to approve a community-wide spending plan so that then we can begin setting up programs early next year and start pushing that funding out through grant awards and programs like that. But we do know this funding needs to last us through two thousand and twenty-four. We know there's a lot of other buckets of funding that are coming. And so we want to make sure that we're also being very deliberate in pursuing all of those different buckets.
And one final question. Last week, we approved, I think it was five hundred thousand dollars for community navigators. How can our community, how can they tap into that resource? What's the most appropriate way for them to utilize the people that we have allocated that money for?
So we just got that approved last week. We are going to be having a meeting with Whit O'Brien, which is our consultant that helps us stand up programs. What we most likely will want to do is issue, there's kind of two different buckets we've talked about, right? There's, there's the help to try and get people back into the workforce. That's probably moving on a slightly quicker track because there's already some plans for that. But then there's also the track that would help individuals get connected to assistance or nonprofits or businesses, get connected to the grant resources. What we would like to do is issue RFPs. Whit O'Brien can help us with that because these are specific federal dollars. We need to make very sure that folks understand what they're signing up for so that we don't have a repeat of cares on some of those issues. And so we will get those RFPs issued. Hopefully, some groups out in the community that are already used to working with those populations will bid. You know, maybe they can charge us some administrative fees for operating the program and actually conducting the program. So we are working on fleshing that out now. And once we have some RFPs set up, we'll make sure to advertise that through commission meetings and other areas so people know to, to come in and, and make application.
Okay. So you know, I like timelines. What's your timeline on that?
That's an excellent question. Do you have a timeline, Brent?
First of October, he would say.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess kind of a statement to begin with. I've been on the commission now for four and a half years. And during that period of time, we've had several discussions about the space needs and so forth. But now we're at a point where we're looking at a discussion for the future. What are we going, what is going to impact Sedgway County for the next fifty years? This commission for the past four and a half years hasn't tackled that. We, we've put Band-Aids on. We've listened to the DA, we've listened to the sheriff, we've listened to the, the courts, and then we kind of Band-Aid it and kind of chugged along without making decisions that's going to impact Sedgway County for the future, fifty years at least. going to impact Sedgway County for the future, 50 years at least. We do have some crisis on our hands at this point in time. We know that we've got a behavioral health crisis on our hands. And some of the decisions we're going to have to make in the very near future is how we're going to move forward on that. But we're sitting here now with a problem that we've been told about for four and a half years that I've been on the commission, that we've got space needs problems. And we've listened to the electeds from across the board and really, again, just kind of put Band-Aids on in order to be able to stagger forward and not really fix the problem and do what public servants should do. And how are we going to move this county forward for the next 50 years? And we're at a perfect point. I mean, I, we got to this point through not taking action. But at this point, we do have the ability to take action because we're at a great point. We have the lowest bond rates that we could ever hope for, and I can't believe that they're going to last forever. So if we don't take action sometime in the near future, it's going to cost us more in the long run. We've gone through and again, as we staggered forward, we've said, hey, let's look at what kind of buildings we can move into. We've been through that. We've looked at all kinds of buildings. Nothing meets our needs. Currently, again, we're in a perfect position because we've got ARPA funding. Before, we were trying to do everything to minimize the cost to the taxpayers on any kind of decision. But right now, we do. We're blessed by the fact that we've got ARPA funding so that we can make great decisions to move us forward 50 years. And I keep saying that because this decision is not something to take lightly, but it's not something that we can skip again. We've skipped it too many times. Again, we need to listen to the sheriff. We need to listen to the DA. We need to listen to the courts. They've been telling us the same thing over and over again, but we haven't had the will to make a decision. I think now is the time to make a will, to state the will to move forward. I understand that. The decision we make today, if we take a vote on this, is going to set a path for the future. We're going to have to make some hard decisions from this point forward that aren't part of this decision. But this puts us in that position that we're going to have to make it. So I'm fully supportive of the decision that's before us at the present time. It is going to chart a path for us, and there's no going back at that point in time that I can see. So again, I totally support the proposal that's on the table. I look forward to making some other decisions that are going to have far-reaching impact on what we're going to do with the comcare, what we're going to do with admin building and so forth. But we have to finally start making decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of comments and maybe a question as well. But I would say, again, just to be clear, I have supported every change we've made thus far, and we've made numerous changes over the last few years. I think if, if anybody's paying attention to all the things that have happened, we've had quite a few projects and enhancements to our space needs just in the last few years even. So again, my desire for a new space needs study is because, again, I don't think the DA has the same sense for space needs that he had a few years ago. He even said today, today he's got a couple of spaces not being utilized. I'm sure he could use more space as we go forward. He'll run out of space again, and he'll need more space again. So I don't disagree that we need to provide additional space for the next 50 years. But today, his immediate needs have been solved, whereas a few years ago, they were operating out of closets and hallways. So it's not the same today as it was even a few years ago. Sheriff has new space. I think his space needs are largely solved. I don't know what space needs he has other than jail space. That's the biggest problem he probably has over there right now. But in terms of his admin, it's largely solved. And the court situation, it probably is the same, impeccably actually worse today than it was even a few years ago. But, but again, I think that the presentations that we've seen years ago may not be the same. We're talking about pro temp judges today. That conversation didn't happen five years ago. Today, we're talking about, one of my, I guess one of my questions for you, Lindsay, is today we have the option of going outside the three-block area.
Yes, we do.
But whereas a few years ago, we didn't have that option. That's a significant change that may lower the cost for the taxpayers. So I think that's, that's good to understand that. We have today learned that through the COVID pandemic, we, people, some people can work from home and do a very good job. They may not actually need a government workspace. They can, we can actually work out essentially an efficient way to get the work done, that providing essentially an office for them to do that in. So we have things today, we understand things today that we didn't even know a few years ago. So I don't know if I would say everything's a Band-Aid. I think, I think we evolve, we make the best decisions, and I've supported those decisions along the process. So let's be clear that when we lower tax rates because we don't need the money right now, and we later on increase tax rates to make, to provide for the needs of the future, that's, that's what we're scared of. As you described that, we always have the right to pivot, lower the tax rates on the people because we don't need the money right now. But the fear is we're, it's hard politically later on to increase tax rates when those needs come back. And so I guess I am less concerned about being nimble in government and adjusting our burden of government as our needs ebb and flow. I think we should be able to do that. We should be able to explain it to our constituents, and we should be able to politically stand up and say, here's why we're lowering rates today, and here's why we're going to increase rates in the future. This idea we're going to continue to add debt service because we're scared of the political conflict, I don't know that I agree with that. I think we ought to be nimble. And let me just say, my final comment is, this entire issue of having to spend the money, I agree, I agree. We're, by the way, I'll support, I'm sure there'll be a motion today, and I'll support moving forward with, with what's being proposed today. But having said that, this ARPA money, in my opinion, is interesting because most of the time in government, we identify the needs first, then we define, then we figure out how to appropriate funding second. This is different because we have money being provided to communities across this nation, and now we're trying to find ways to spend the money. And I just think as a, just as a comment, personal comment, it seems backwards to me. So we're going to find ways to spend the money. We, you know, we have way more asks for uses of this money than we, we'll have money, even when we talk about $100 million. I promise you, we could spend $1 billion if we had it. So the idea that we won't spend the money, that's, that's really not a concern. I think we're going to have way more asks for these funds than there are funds available. And we will spend it because that's what we do. But at the end of the day, I think this process is backwards. Again, I appreciate the government providing solutions to our COVID pandemic, but we're doing a lot of things that, in my opinion, are kind of far away from the pandemic. And so I'm just, as a, as a citizen of this country, I'm concerned that our country is doing things that don't make sense to me. Seems, it seems irresponsible for us to just spend money that actually doesn't even exist, and we're going to go find ways to spend it. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Been a lot of comments. I don't want to belabor them. I would like to point out just a couple of things. And one is that I think Commissioner Lopez, your statements were spot on. I would agree that this space world could have been done by previous commissions. When we got on, when Commissioner Cruz and I were first on this a couple of years ago, two and a half years ago, that's, we were exposed because Commissioner Dennis was, was very aggressive in trying to, he had the vision that we had a space problem. So we had to get our hands around it. And, and I know before your time, Commissioner Dennis, any of those commissioners could have addressed, any of those commissions could have addressed this future problem. But they didn't. But you are champion, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention for it to learn. So Sarah was just, I mean, Commissioner Lopez is just six months into it and has grasped it well. So with that, I think that if you try to get away from some of the emotion and comments and the analysis and everything else, again, I want to thank Judge Gering and Mark Bennett and Sheriff Easter for answering all the questions really well, and I appreciate that very much. But if you get down to, we all run for elections, and if I recall, most everybody leads with their big supporter of public safety. I don't think any forum has been said, well, what do you think's most priority? Well, it's, it's space needs and buildings. So this is not, this is a no-brainer to me. We've got to take this step to improve this public safety, and the court backlog is part of that. So to me, public safety is still priority one. It will be, and we will have to figure out, and we will figure out the space needs after that, and what's the future of our space. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the budget for the court backlog, public safety as, as in the spending plan as provided.
Check in.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay. Tom, before we, before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Tony, you want to step out of your closet there? We want to say thank you. We understand that, that Tony has broadened his resume, and Tony's going to, come on up, Tony. You're a public, I know. You want to get his, oh, there's the camera. It's not on you now.
Come stand up here.
Here, come here.
Come on, come stand up here.
Tony, over here, over, right here.
There you go.
Anyway, Tony, thanks for the few years that I've got to know you, and congratulations on your new move. You're going to improve your horizons and apply your skills in a, in a rewarding way for improving your life. So I can't thank you enough, and you've been great to work with. So, yeah. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, it's been a pleasure working with you. All the years I've been here, you've been a very kind and gentle person. I can bring you any of my crazy ideas, and you are an extreme professional. I wanted to say thank you. You've done an extremely good job, and we're going to miss you. I know you'll do well in your future endeavors, but you're going to be very difficult to replace, and I just, I am so glad I got to know you, and I wanted to say Godspeed. Appreciate what you've done here.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I actually stopped by to see Tony a little briefly before this meeting to tell him personally how much I appreciated what he's done for Sedgway County, and that we're going to miss him. But what you didn't see behind the scenes, first of all, he pretty well runs these meetings so that the public can see exactly what we're doing and hear what we're doing. But several huge projects that are going forward in Sedgway County really were made possible by some of the things that Tony did. Everybody knows we've been working in the North Junction for some time. Well, how did we go up to Topeka and try and explain to the folks up in Topeka what the impact of the North Junction is? Well, Tony came up on and said, hey, let's put together a video and show them the impact in Topeka of what's happening with the North Junction. And we carried that video, actually, Tony went with us to Topeka when we went up to see the Secretary of Transportation, and we showed the video. And we've used that video a number of times to tell the public what the impact of just that one project is. And that's just one example. Everything that, that we see, that a lot of the graphics, the things, the forward-facing of this commission and this county was really put together by Tony and his folks down in this little office down on the first floor. So I don't know, it's, I hate to see Tony go. I know it's great for him, for his future. We've got to hit out on Textron because now they've told two of our great people. But I just want to tell Tony, thank you very much. It's been an honor working with you. Appreciate it.
You bet. Commissioner Lopez?
How long have you been here, Tony?
It would be 20 years in January.
20 years, wow. Well, obviously, I have not been here that long, but I have appreciated working with you. I mean, I've had a couple of ideas that just had no idea how to make it, you know, real, and you took it and ran with it and did amazing. So you've done a lot for Sedgway County. You've done a lot for me in the last six months. And now that soccer season is starting again, I don't know who I'm supposed to vent to because who else up here loves soccer the way we do? I don't know. So I might, you might still get some texts. I hope that's okay. But I really appreciate everything you've done, and I'm really happy to see your career advance, but I am very sad for Sedgway County, too.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I asked John if he would put together like a little clip, but we weren't able to make that happen because I wanted, I wanted a little video just all about Tony. 20 years is a very, very long time to put into public service. And I know over the past couple of years, working with you as a creative, you know, we had those little back and forths, and I just, I've really appreciated working with you. You are a real gem, and I'm going to miss you, Tony. I hope that we can stay in touch and call you up when I have these creative ideas. Maybe you can lend an ear if you're not too busy. But I wish I could have got that video made for you. I think that would have been great. All those tire clips, I mean, who wants to, we don't want to miss those.
There's been a lot of them, projects.
Yeah. Well, I wish you well.
Okay. Tony, thanks again. I just had a message from KTPS. They said the picture's really blurry and the sound is horrible, but other than that... All right, Tony. Anything else? Appreciate it. And can we give you a applause? Okay. Anything else come before the commission? I don't see any, so we will be adjourned. Wait, Commissioner Lopez, sorry.
Can I say one thing real quick? Sorry. I just wanted to throw out, because I know I've been hearing a lot from a lot of people that are worried about COVID and our numbers rising. So I want to throw out that next week, Dr. Menz, Dr. Ebersol, and Dr. Antonios will be speaking with us on Tuesday to go over where we're at in Sedgway County, what our hospitals look like, and explain kind of their threshold of if it hits 10%, what that looks like for our hospitals. And I just want to make sure that we address that today. So we will be talking about that. And if you have any questions or concerns or anything, I mean, please get ahold of us between now and then, and we will, we can include those things in our conversation. But I just wanted to make sure that that got at least said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? I don't see anything else before the commission, so we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.